All right, good evening. Today is Monday, February 1st, 2021. Hope everybody's enjoying their snow day. We're just going to open the meeting and then go right into executive session. So do I have a motion to open the meeting? Cynthia, Teraz second, all in favor? Laura, you in favor of opening?
Could she hear?
Laura, can you hear us? I think she's having some problems. Okay, well, we got it. We got four votes, so that's good enough to open the meeting. So do I have a motion to enter executive session?
Motion.
Cynthia Teraz second, all in favor? Okay, so we're going to close out of this, this meeting, and we're going to hit the link for the executive session. And then for the public, we'll be back at 7:30 for the workshop. Thank you. Okay, good evening. Again, this is Monday, February 1st, 2021. This is a workshop, Board of Education workshop. We just came out of exec, executive session. We've already opened the meeting back at 6:30. So we're just going to continue on now with the public portion of our workshop. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Goodman.
Yes, so Lee, I think Lee's going to introduce the first.
Okay.
Speaker.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'd like to introduce to you Judson Seabird. He's an attorney with the district's law firm, Keenan Bean. And we've asked him to come tonight to present to the Board of Education some informational, some information on the differences between tax surcharies and pilot agreements that the district is involved in in terms of our collection of the tax levy and how that might work and what is involved in making those decisions for the district. And he will give a overview, a brief overview on tax surcharies and pilots and how they work and the mechanisms they're used for. And then in addition, he will also talk to the Board of Education about a proposed pilot agreement that is being proposed by the town, the village, and the county of Westchester. What is the status of that proposal? And what are the recommendations for moving forward with that proposal? So with that, I'll turn that over to Judson Seabird.
Thank you. Thanks, Lee. And again, I wish we were in person. Who knew a snowstorm would, you know, on top of everything else? But with Zoom, it's like, you know, I feel like it's like one of the miracles of Zoom. We're like the post office, you know, the old saying about, you know, neither snow or rain or whatever can keep us from the completion of our appointed rounds. So, so here we are. Lee had asked, and I just give the board, kind of, as she said, a quick tutorial of what I do, what our firm does relative to tax surchari claims, tax surchari litigation, which is, you know, tax surchari litigation and tax assessment challenges. Those are routine. You see them, unfortunately, more often than not, they come to you in the form of a request to settle pending tax surchari litigation. I'll talk about what those cases involve. I'll talk about why, more often than not, they come to you in the form of a request for a settlement and in turn, associated school tax refunds. Some of the particular issues we encounter with the types of tax cert cases we handle in the town of Eastchester. And then briefly, just touch on exemptions, because exemptions give way in certain instances to pilot agreements. Just to give you, again, just a quick, quick tutorial overview. I do have some materials on the tax cert piece that I will, kind of a primer that I will distribute after tonight's meeting through Lee to everyone. But obviously, one of the issues concerning pilots involves a proposed pilot that has been under discussion and is moving forward, and I'll, I'll close with that. So tax surchari litigation, again, periodically, for those of you who have been on the board, and for any new board members, you're going to find that from time to time, you get a request. And the way things work in the town of Eastchester is tax surchari litigation is defended by the town of Eastchester. We participate on behalf of the school district because the school district, the town is the assessing unit and is primarily responsible for the defense of its assessments. But the school district always takes the biggest hit because your share of taxes is, outsizes the towns. It's larger than the village, larger than the county. Usually about 60% of any tax refund in one of these cases is attributable to the school district. And there has been a longstanding relationship between the town of Eastchester and the two school districts, Eastchester, who parenthetically we represent as well, and Tuckahoe, that they want the school district involved. They want their attorneys involved in the process, in the defense, and then in terms of formulating settlement terms. So what occurs is a settlement, if it's reached, will be vetted by the town of Eastchester. The town of Eastchester, in turn, through its town attorney, will send a letter to the district asking the Board of Ed to approve the terms because the town, as a standing policy, will not approve any tax surchari litigation unless it has a sign off from the Board of Education of the affected school district. And then I will, or my firm will typically provide a summary to Lee. Not that we keep Lee or the district in dark in terms of where we are in these cases, but just something that, that can summarize the case and discuss and explain the settlement terms so that the board can be, you know, brought up to full speed when asked to, to approve these terms. So this happens. Fortunately, we're in a period somewhat COVID-related where the tax cert activity has been a little muted. But it is, it's, it's a fact of life. Not only for you, it's kind of cold comfort. This is a, this is the bane of a lot of school districts, you know, existence in terms of having to deal with tax surchari activity and the kind of unexpected financial blips it can cause from time to time. So what is it? Basically, tax surchari litigation is a property owner dissatisfied with his or her assessment, brings a legal challenge against the town. The town sets assessments. They do it every year. They do it by the publication of an annual assessment rule, which identifies every taxable piece of property within the town of Eastchester, and it assigns an assessment to that particular property. That assessment is a value, and that assessment drives the amount of taxes that will be levied against each parcel. And every year, as a property owner, if you are provided notice, and you are, of what your assessment is going to be, you have an opportunity to challenge it. And that takes two steps. The first, you're, as a property owner, you're required to go to the local Board of Assessment Review in the town of Eastchester. That's an administrative process. You file what's known, you know, colloquially as a grievance with the Board of Assessment Review. That's done after the tentative assessment rule is published in June. It's grievance day. You go in, you, you make your case, and the Board of Assessment Review then determines whether it's going to lower the assessment or keep it as is. If it, if it, if it does either, but typically, if it denies, well, if it lowers and the, the property owner is still dissatisfied or if it denies, there is then the step after the assessment rule is finalized in September. It happens September 15th of every year. There is the opportunity to then bring a legal proceeding in New York State Supreme Court challenging the assessment, and that's tax surchari litigation. And it can follow two tracks. For owners of single-family homes, you can file what's known as a SCAR proceeding, Small Claims Assessment Review. And that is a very quick, informal process. It's handled very quickly. Our office does not get involved in SCAR proceedings. SCAR proceedings throughout the county are handled really by the assessors, sometimes with the assistance of their town legal staff, but usually by the assessors. And as homeowners, I'm sure you get, you know, particularly as you get into the spring, as the tentative assessment rule is about to be issued, you get all these flyers from all these services saying, you know, we'll lower your assessment, we'll, you know. That, that particular industry, you know, these, these rep services, they're going after residential properties. They're going after potential SCAR proceedings. And again, those kinds of proceedings, they're brought, they're typically resolved even before taxes are levied on the assessment under review. And they typically have very little refund impact, if at all, on the district because they're decided so quickly. And in that regard, just to add to the confusion, you have to keep in mind, there is a one-year delay in Westchester between the finalization of the assessment rule in September of a year and the levy of school taxes on that assessment. Because your school taxes go out in late August for September, or it's September and January 31st payment. So you, you literally look back a year in terms of the assessment that is going to be subject of levy. So for example, the, the taxes that are being levied this year, 2021, are based on the 2019 assessment. So I, I offer that because these SCAR proceedings are typically done and decided before tax, the school tax bills go out. The other type of proceedings, and the type my firm is involved in, involve commercial properties, large multifamily properties, sometimes on occasion, a single-family property, if a property owner chooses not to go the SCAR route. And those are called Article VII proceedings. And they're filed, again, they're filed annually. And the thing about Article VII proceedings and a question we often get from our clients when we present them for settlement is, when they come in, we're usually not talking about settling one or two years. It often involves at least four or five years minimum. And the reason that occurs is because these cases get filed. They get filed throughout the county and every, and every municipality. They all go to a single judge in New York State Supreme Court in White Plains. There simply isn't the, the court capacity to process and hear them quickly enough. And the court rules themselves, or the real property tax law, the, the guiding legislation in New York State actually allows a property owner to start a proceeding, but not to actively prosecute it until four years after it's filed. By the filing of what's known as a note of issue, which is a document that goes to the court saying the case is ready to go to trial. So these Article VII proceedings often stack up, meaning they accrue from year to year. And if the case involves some type of potential over-assessment liability or the prospect of refunds, those refunds accrue year to year to year. And it's very difficult to catch them early or to get the court to look at them early in such a way that, you know, we're only dealing with a year or two or, or, you know, two or three years or one or two years. We can do it occasionally, but it's, it's, it's more often than not that you're going to see a collection of four or five years in one of these cases. With regard to what we do, when we, when we get a case, my firm, we review the case file. We look at the filing that's been made with the State Supreme Court. We look to see if there have been any types of procedural or technical deficiencies or defects that we can utilize to get the case dismissed. We have on occasion and continue to have success from time to time with a petitioner who has failed to, for example, serve the school district. They're required, once they start one of these, to mail copies of the petitions to the school district, which is why every year from like September 16th through the end of October, Lee's office gets inundated. Dr. Goodman and Lee's office gets inundated with all of these mailings. But if that's not done, that's grounds for dismissal. There are, there are other technical grounds involving the BAR process that we look at, grounds for dismissal. Beyond that, particularly with the commercial properties, we're in somewhat of a void initially because if we're going to be dealing with these cases substantively, there are a number of issues and really impediments with regard to the defense. And the first is simply the structure or the nature of the way properties are assessed in the town of Eastchester. And what Eastchester does is not foreign or unlike most municipalities in, in Westchester. But the town of Eastchester assessment rule is a vestige of the past, okay? The assessments that are on that rule from year to year reflect the last time that the town of Eastchester engaged in a property-by-property revaluation of all properties within the confines of the town, a revaluation. The last time that was done was in the 1960s, when a, when a quote-unquote "fresh, brand-new" assessment rule was formulated and adopted. And since that time, again, like a lot of municipalities, that role has just been carried forward from year to year. And the only changes that are made, they're not made on a, on a, on a global or universal scale. They're made on a property-by-property basis. If a new property, if a vacant property is developed, it gets reassessed. If a building is improved, it gets reassessed. If there's a fire loss in a building, it gets reassessed. If there's a tax surchari case and there's a court judgment saying change the assessment, it gets reassessed. But otherwise, the figures and the assessments on that role reflect values from the 1960s. So all properties in Eastchester are assessed on a fractional basis. And if you look at your own assessments of, you know, your, your homes or properties that you may own, you'll see that they're assessed in the, in the thousands or tens of thousands of dollars. They, they bear no relation to the actual market value of current market value of property. So how do you try to figure out what that fractional assessment means in terms of the year 2020 or last year 2019? It's done, unfortunately, through the sort of artificial application of the New York State equalization rate. Every year, New York State, the Department of Taxation and Finance, looks at sales data that is produced by virtue of sales transactions within the town of Eastchester in the prior year. Whenever you sell property, you fill out a form. It's called an equalization form. It goes to Albany. They look at it, and they use that to track market value of, or purported market value of, of property in Eastchester. And they come up with this equalization rate, which is supposed to represent, when applied, the difference between the total value of assessed value on the assessment rule, adding up all the assessments on the assessment rule, and the actual true market value of all properties in the town of Eastchester. And the problem is that over time, that has just expanded and expanded. And now, you know, we're at a point where the equalization rate in the town of Eastchester is, you know, about 1.5%. So you apply that, you, you apply that sort of artificial EAC rate to the assessment, and it can produce, it can produce market values that may, you know, are not necessarily reflective of market value. And that particular issue in commercial properties is made even more difficult because in tax surchari litigation for commercial properties, as an example, the courts do not value commercial properties based on trying to compare a sale of a commercial property to a comparable commercial property. From an appraisal standpoint, that's deemed to be, unfortunately, that's deemed to be unreliable. Instead, what they look at is the income stream that a commercial property generates and what would an investor pay for that income stream? It's called the income capitalization approach, which is dependent on figuring out what a commercial property generates in terms of its income, its expenses, and its ultimate income production. So I offer that because, again, we, we get these cases. We first have to try to figure out, apply the EAC rate. Are we, are we in the ballpark? Even if we are, we have to wait until we get some sort of analysis or we get income and expense data relating to a commercial property so we can then begin to do the exercise ourselves or through an appraiser to figure out, is there liability here? And again, given some of these constraints and some of these impediments, you know, oftentimes there, there is liability and oftentimes, you know, even if, you know, it's a, it's a question. A trial in one of these cases comes down to two experts. One for the town and school district, one for the property owner, you know, giving their opinion as to what the value is. It's not, it's, it's a very soft science. So as a result, typically, these cases end up in, in some sort of negotiated settlement. I do think our track record, both in Tuckahoe and Eastchester working with the town, has been one of getting, you know, the best, the best deal that we can when we have to go that route in terms of minimizing liability. Again, in terms of Tuckahoe, we've been fortunate that we have not had a, you know, a consistent, you know, pattern of, of case after case after case.
Can you give us an idea of, I'm sorry, can you give us an idea of how much is outstanding for the district and our liability at this point?
So, yeah, well, again, so right now, in terms of active cases, there is one case that we are in the process of. We've, we've tentatively settled it. It is now with the town of Eastchester. It will likely be presented to the Board of Education within a month or so, is my guess. It's a commercial property. It involves the, the, it involves the paint store on Columbus Avenue in, in, in Tuckahoe. It's multi-year. That case is likely to result in school tax refunds of about $58,000.
And in general, what would you say are overall, like with, with all the cases that we have outstanding?
It's, again, it's different. I, we have, we have a, we have a case involving a residential co-op. Quick word on residential co-ops and condos. They're not valued on sales. Under New York State law, they have to be treated like they're rental properties, so that's another wrinkle. That, that case could potentially be a six-figure, 100, 100 to 150. All told, I would say, Lee, I'm, I'm just in terms of stuff that's in the mix right now that we have a handle on, I would say around 200 to 250. And that's kind of generous. Keep in mind, you, you've got a reserve of over $3 million to protect against, you know, these types of claims. There's nothing out there right now that is that type of break the bank.
We accumulate all the different ones that are out there, and we have a long list of them. And as you said, just to clarify to the board that they don't come through each year. So we continually accumulate those.
Right, and I, yeah, and what, what we do for purposes of reserve computation, I mean, Lee works with the auditors. We, we take all of the cases that are filed, and we look at what has been pled in each of those cases in terms of what the assessment is and what it should be lowered to. We do that and then come up with a number of, you know, here's the starting assessments, if we put them all in a bundle, and here's what they would be if all the claimed assessments were granted. And that number is ridiculous, and I'll tell you why. Because the way, the way, the way these cases are pled, oftentimes, just as a matter of course, no petitioner's attorney wants to sell himself short. You know, it's like if I, if I slipped and sprained my ankle outside of a school building, I wouldn't sue for $100,000. I'd sue for $10 million, right? The same thing happens in these tax cert cases. So, and actually, if you, recently in the papers, the last couple of years, there was the example of some of the golf courses where the petitioner's attorneys are claiming they're worth $1, okay? So those are so hyperbolic and so out of whack. However, what we have typically, what districts have typically done is we take a fraction of that number for purposes of setting a reserve, and we work with the auditors to do that.
So probably in the interest of time, why don't we move on to the pilot and discuss how that differs from a tax cert? Give us just a real brief overview of what a pilot is, and then we can talk about the one that's in front of the Board of Education.
Fine, fine. Yeah, I, I reckon, this is a scintillating topic. I could go all night. Taxing, let me just say.
Fascinating, fascinating.
Yes, fascinating, right? So pilots.
I know that the board did want to get a good overview, so I appreciate it.
And I'll, I'll give you the primer, and you can read it and snooze. But I, it is helpful just to kind of get a sense of how this works.
Just to end this discussion though, just to recap though, Ms. Lou, we, we shoot for 35%, right?
That's correct.
In our reserve panel.
And as Judson, yes, as Judson.
Outstanding liabilities, which, which to Mr. Segal's point, usually gets settled for, I think, around 50% of what's actually asked. So that 35% served as well, right? Good, okay, thank you.
And, and, and just, just to touch on that, Peter, the, the unknown is always out there with these. So there could be something lurking that can catch us by surprise, which is why that 35%, I think, is a very sound figure to use. Pilots, look, pilots, pilot is an acronym. It means payment in lieu of taxes. And a pilot is triggered when a property is taken off the tax rolls, when it's rendered exempt. And it's not used for all exemptions. I mean, under the state law, you know, all types of properties are, are exempt for all types of purposes, educational, religious, benevolent societies, those are not, those are not the types of exemptions that trigger a pilot. A pilot is triggered really under specified circumstances when really one of, in the county of Westchester, it's typically when there is an industrial development agency, either the county IDA, or some municipalities have their own local IDAs. Eastchester does not. But when the county IDA becomes involved in a project and the county IDA gets involved in a project that it views as having some beneficial economic impact, some beneficial impact in terms of the creation or preservation of underserved housing. It's, you know, it's a, it's a tool that the county utilizes to create economic opportunity, and again, in, in certain instances, to create housing opportunities. The other, just as an aside with regard to housing, there's another vehicle that, that can be used for affordable housing, apart from the IDA. It's under the New York State Private Housing Finance Law, which requires going directly to the municipality in which a project is to be located, asking for an exemption and getting a pilot. But what happens with the county IDA, and I'm going to mention, I'll, I'll focus on that because that's the one we're dealing with now, is the IDA reviews a project. If it deems it appropriate for, you know, the use of, you know, its authority, it can provide all types of benefits, one of which is a tax exemption. And tax exemption is triggered because when the county IDA is involved in a project, it actually ends up taking title to the property. And the IDA is a tax-exempt entity. So the IDA takes title to the property. The property goes exempt, it's off the tax rolls. It's not subject to assessment. And then the IDA leases it back to a developer, to a project sponsor. And under those circumstances, what the IDA looks for is a pilot agreement. So that pilot agreement is a recognition that, okay, the property's exempt, it's no longer going to generate or be subject to tax levy, but that developer or that, that project sponsor should provide something back to the taxing jurisdictions in the form of revenue to make up for what isn't levied, okay? You do that by an agreement. And the agreement is signed by the IDA and by the affected taxing jurisdictions. The IDA wants all affected taxing. The IDA wants, um, all affected taxing jurisdictions to be on board. To have participated in the negotiations and to, you know, come to the table and, and, and walk away and, and, you know, wa- walk away in, in a, in a sense of being. Um, satisfied that what's being proposed, you know, is something that, that, that they can live with. Um, and what then occurs is. The property's not subject to levy, but annually, there is a payment made by the, again, the developer. The project sponsor. And that payment is made in lieu of taxes and that payment gets distributed equitably. Based upon the proportionate share of taxes that would otherwise be levied to each of the taxing jurisdictions. So. The school district would get its, again, typically your sixty percent of a tax bill. You get your sixty percent share of that payment, whatever it is. There is no one-size-fits-all type of agreement for pilots. Um, and I, I'll also say that oftentimes pilots will not, at the end of the day. Generate dollar for dollar what you would otherwise levy against a property. And, and the reason, what, well, one of the things for that is to keep in mind that. If a property comes off the tax roll. It is not going to affect your budget or what you collect as a whole. You know, directly, because your budget is your budget, you're going to adopt it. It's going to be levied against all taxable properties in the town of Eastchester or in the, in, within the Tuckahoe School District. And what, the, the, the effect of taking property off the tax rule, all that does is it just, it redistributes. How that total budget is going to be divvied up among all the taxpayers who pay. It's like taking a slice of pie out, you know? Somebody else has to pick up that displacement. So you're, you're still going to budget what you're going to budget, but what the pilot does is. It infuses money into, you know, into the district as, as a, as a kind of standalone revenue stream that you can then use for budget purposes. Um. That's what, you know, that's what's, that's what's being proposed with regard to the Marble Hall project. Um, and I said, you can, you can create all kinds of pilot agreements. You can come up with agreements that say. That, you know, just a fixed amount will be paid every, will be paid every year. You can come up with all kinds of formulas. Marble Hall has approached the village, the town, the county, the county IDA is now actively involved. Negotiations have been underway. And what Marble Hall, first of all, let, let me just mention what Marble, what Marble Hall is. Marble Hall is. A longstanding rent, um, restricted, you know, affordable housing project in Tuckahoe. It's on Columbus Avenue. It's approximately a hundred and thirty units thereabouts. It was built initially in the seventies as Mitchell Lama Housing. It was originally tax exempt. Uh, for a number of years and then the original tax exemption expired. It went on the assessment roll. But it's continued to be operated as, uh, you know, as rent restricted housing. There is a developer who wants to acquire the property, who wants to infuse money into the property. Through a HUD, HUD program. It's known as a preservation program. Um, and the money will be utilized to upgrade. The units in the, in the, in the building with new kitchens, new bathrooms. Common spaces will be upgraded, heating, um, heating systems will be upgraded. Property will really get an overhaul. It will obtain financing through the county IDA partially to make that happen. And with the county IDA involvement, the property will go on the tax exempt portion of the roll.
Justin, can you tell us, um, the times that they are looking to do this?
So the agreement, probably we've been, we've been working on the agreement. I would expect, I might have an, an agreement ready. Presentation to the board within thirty to forty-five days. But the time in terms of when it would kick in would not be really until next year. And because the assessment, remember what I said upfront about the assessment lagging by a year? It should not affect the taxable status of this property for the twenty-one, twenty-two tax levy. We're probably looking at it twenty-two, twenty-three. Tax event in terms of it coming off the roll and the pilot kicking in. And again, the pilot terms that have been proposed, just in terms of the. I'll say the, 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 the floor in terms of what, what you're going, what is going to be paid. Is there is a commitment that whatever the taxes were. Collectively, at the time the pilot kicks in, that will be the first year payment so that. You know, you're not going to see a huge disparity. The, the idea is to really just take what was being paid and carry it forward and then that will be subject to increases over the term of the pilot agreement.
So there's very little, very little downside. Um. Obviously, there is the potential that the, the built-in rate of increase won't keep pace. Well, actually, it will be the same rate of increase, correct?
It, it, I, you know, it will, the, the minimum increase will be two percent, but it can go up to three. Depending on what happens with the, the overall increase of rates from year to year. And there will be. Uh, uh, like a true up or a reconciliation period. Um, that won't happen for a while, but that will occur, I think in the twentieth year is what we've negotiated. Um, there are pending tax sorcery cases on this property that are going to go away. Uh, and this is one of those properties in terms of being, you know, a little of concern because it is an income property. It's a, it's a restricted income. Property. So, you know, there, there is definite value in that. Um, you won't be facing tax sorceries once a pilot agreement is in effect. Um, that, that's off the table. And, yeah, it, Peter, in terms of the, you know, is it? When compared to other pilot agreements, and I would say particularly other pilot agreements for these types of projects. This is very, very favorable because oftentimes, um. For this type of a, of a, of affordable housing, what will be proposed. Is strictly something that is tied to what, you know, the, the ultimate. You know, it's tied to what the income generated year to year on the property is, as opposed to. Trying to fix something that, that is set on, you know, on an existing tax base. I think that platform is a, you know, is a big plus.
Right, so, so the only financial downside for us is if, is if the, the actual rate in which we increase our tax levy. It goes, surpasses that three percent.
Right.
Strictly hasn't, but, you know, who knows what ten years from now brings. Then, then that, that delta we would, we would lose. But, but the upside, the upside is. No more tax sorceries in this property, which is a pretty big upside for us. And then it, it's, it's benefit to the community is a big upside and, and allowing this, this housing project to stay in place and to be upgraded and to be renovated. Is a good thing for our community, which obviously we care about.
Which is why, um, you know, I, I talk like this is, look, the, the negotiation of the pilot has been done, you know, kind of arm in arm with the town and the village. Obviously both looking for the best deal they can get as well, but also I think there's an allied. Recognition that this is a, a community asset that, um. You know, that, that, there's a recognition and, and a, and a desire to keep it preserved and in place.
Right, okay. Was my, my, my assessment of the downside correct or is there something else?
Yes, yeah, it is. And again, even with the downside. Keep in mind that, you know, the, the way that downside represents itself is ultimately in the, in the, in, you know, what you can do. From a tax rate perspective in formulating the budget, if you follow what I mean, because you, you're going to set the parameters of your budget. And your budget, you're going to levy. It's just, you know, what, what, what's the loss of that assessment and, and the, the loss of, of what you're picking up in the pilot going to mean in terms of the overall tax rate to the community?
Right, so that, if we ever have a situation where, where we exceeded that three percent or we, we, um. That, that, that difference comes out, I guess, gets spread out amongst our entire tax base.
Right, correct, yes, correct.
Okay. Yep, I think I understand it. Um. Anybody else have any other questions, Mr. Seaver, about this? I know we've talked about it before in his, in executive session, so, so this is not the first time the board's heard of this. We certainly wanted the pub- public to hear it and to understand it as well.
Um, I have a question if you don't mind. Um, is my mic on? Okay, so, um, thank you. I, it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of detail and so just to be sort of clarify a little bit. Because this is a, a little bit our second time hearing and I'm sure for those listening for the first time is, it's a lot of detail. So. Just so that, um, breaking it down or summarizing, this property was, is currently on the tax roll. Is that, am I using the right terminology? So it was in the assessment pool, so to speak.
Right.
And now we're proposing, or, or the IDA and the town and the village and the county is proposing that it comes off the roll. It becomes a pilot, which we then, it's sort of a standalone revenue for the district. But the assessment being taken off the roll impacts the community because it's spread out now, whatever that assessment was. So I guess for dollar purposes, could you, not in any great detail, but could you just sort of generally tell us what? That looks like financially to both the town and the school?
Well, I, I can for the school. Let, let me put it this way, in, in current twenty-twenty-one. Tax levy dollars. That, that, that property is paying approximately three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in property taxes. This year, school taxes. Uh, and I apologize, I don't have the total, but that school, let's just, I think it's easier if we just talk about the school. So when, let, let's say if the, if the pilot were to go into effect, you know, immediately or next year. That three hundred and sixty thousand dollars would be eliminated. And it would have to be. You know, it, it's like levy displacement. That three hundred and sixty thousand has to then be spread out among everybody else in the pie. However. Keep in mind that before we even get there. The way this pilot is structured is that year one. The payment is going to equate to what had been paid. So. Year one payment may be in, in three sixty or, you know, r- right in that ballpark. So the idea is to dampen or to lessen. From a budgetary standpoint in terms of what you need to pass off to the community at large.
Right, so it, it comes, it goes into a different revenue bucket now.
Right, yeah, right.
Right.
So now we, we have revenue coming in from, from that stream, which allows us to adjust. Or plays into how much of the allowable tax cap we want to take for that next year. So. So to, to Laura's point, that three sixty-five or so comes up, comes out off the tax levy. It gets directly dispersed amongst all the taxpayers, but. Taxpayers get a benefit in the sense that we now are less, a little bit less reliant on the tax levy for our revenue. So that allows us to factor that in. So we have a budget for the year. We need to, we get revenue to make up that budget. Most of it comes from tax revenue. We can offset that with these other additional incomes that come in such as this. Which could allow us to tickle, to, to ask for less from the community in a tax raise than usual. Is that, is that fair?
Either I've explained it well or you've really got, that's it.
And, and I think also.
I think you've got it.
But, and, and also if I could just add too, the, the, you mentioned the, uh, tax. Uh, certs that are potentially out there that wouldn't, they would go away. So that's another important thing for the community, I think, to understand that that would be a hit for the district too.
Right, right.
Yeah, now, obviously, we, we, we could, just so the community kind of understands this whole thing, I guess, we don't. We don't have to accept this offer. We could, we could, um, sort of, uh, you know, push back on it. Um, and ultimately, um, they, they need an agreement from all the stakeholders in order to get this deal done. Um, so somebody may be asking, why are we taking this risk at all? Why not just? Refuse it. And I, I think the answer to that is that, again, it's good for our communities. This, this housing project, um. Really is in need of repair, it's in need of upgrade. So, um, if we were to sort of play hardball, if you will. Um, it would be, uh, you know, not a good thing in, in, as a whole for the community. But is that right? I mean, is there a way we could be ruled on this if we wanted to? Kind of stay firm on saying, no, we'd rather have this property on our tax roll rather than.
Well, well, I want to just, first of all, one clarification is that where we're ending up right now is not where we started. And that, this has been an ongoing, and the, 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 the terms now are, are, you know, better than they were. Um, and could, could you play hardball? I, I, you could, you'd be an outlier. I, I, I mean, quite candidly, you'd be on an island. I, you know, I, I think there is a, the village particularly, um. You know, the county, um, I think we are in an environment right now where, um, affordable housing is a, uh. You know, an issue that, that is rightfully so, you know, a, a real subject of, of, of concern and, and of attention. So. You, you, you know, when I put the whole thing in a bundle, uh, in terms of. What, you know. What's being offered or, or what's on the table as far as the, the offset with the pilot? I, I just don't think playing hardball would be. You know. It's, you know, it's your call, but yeah.
I'm certainly not advocating for that. I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
Those that are watching, I'm just trying to make them understand the entire, uh.
Right.
Orbit of, of options here, just so everybody understands, like, we, we don't have to go along with this deal. We, we think, and I think you, you know, with your advisement, and it makes total sense to me that there's a lot of reasons to do it, a lot of reasons to be cooperative. And, um, to go along with this, but I'm just trying to make those who are watching understand sort of the whole, the whole three sixty of it. So we, we, we could, if we, we have the option of saying, you know, just kind of shrugging our shoulders and saying, no. Um, but we would be the outliers. We would not be cooperative with our other stakeholders and ultimately. We're, we're not doing what we should be doing, I, in my opinion, to help better our community and, uh, and, and make our property better.
And, and just a couple of things as well, it just, um, that I didn't mention, you know, you do have students that reside there.
Right.
Um, and in terms of the students that reside there, there is, there is nothing being proposed with regard to these improvements that is going to change. The composition of the, of the, of the building in such a way that it's going to increase bedroom account or the number of units or, you know, I. Those, those numbers are going to re- remain, I would think relatively fixed. So. You, you know, you're not, you're not, it's, it's, it's not a brand new housing facility, nor are you inviting something that is going to create a. You know, a, a pronounced uptick in terms of student generation and district cost.
All right, I think we understand it. I think we, we certainly as a board do, I believe. Um. Next steps, I think you mentioned it, next steps is to get something in front of the board to vote on, right?
Yep, yeah.
And that was the timeframe for that, I think you might have mentioned.
I think thirty, thirty to forty-five days, yeah.
Okay, all right. So for those in the pu- in the public that are listening to this for the first time or watching this, if you have, it, it's a confusing topic. It, it's not. Easy to digest, certainly. So if anyone has any questions or comments, you know, uh, I would. Recommend you direct them towards Ms. Ms. Lou. Um, obviously you can email the board too and, and ask questions as well. If anyone has any concerns about this, but I think, I think we're in good, as far as the board's concerned, I think we're in a good place on this.
Great.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you.
We joked around about last night, time about having the opportunity to meet you in person.
Yeah. So it'll happen, I promise.
Yeah. But thank you for your time and thank you for.
You're welcome.
Good work on this. I know you did get them down quite a bit, so thank you for the good work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so I think we could, uh, move on to our next topic, right? Dr. Gibbon, which I know you're going to be presenting on, on the strategic plan. Take your microphones off.
Okay, so, um, we are presenting, uh, Mr. Keo and I will be presenting tonight on the strategic plan, a mid-year update. And I want the community and the board to realize that you do this kind of presentation. Before we start the budget, budget process will be, which will be next month. And the budget process will be based. On our strategic plan and our needs for academic achievement for all our students. So, um, if the board could turn off their cameras and their, um, and mute themselves, we could start with the presentation. Uh, Mr. Keo, you want to share your screen? Great, thank you. First, I want to thank the Board of Education for this opportunity to update you and our community. On our work around the strategic plan we adopted last year. I am joined by Mr. Christopher Keo, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity to present again. While we illustrated an overview of the plan and our goals in our previous workshop presentation. This evening we'll report on our progress and preview some of the work ahead.
Tonight, you will hear the word goal used frequently. The district's mission is to prepare every student for excellence. In order to do this, the district has previously established these three main goals that steer our. In order to do this, the district has previously established these three main goals that steer our efforts. Our strategic our strategic plan is grown out of these. We will never fully check off these goals. They are our lodestar in planning around curriculum, policies, budget and per- and programming.
These are the pillars of our strategic plan that were put together in this format during last year's budget process. We believe these to be the foundation of a successful district and student experience. We are now going to present each of these pillars in detail. We will explore our work in some of these areas and we'll begin by taking a look at some highlights.
So first of all, this was a year like none other. So given the curb walls that were thrown this year, we have responded to the challenges with resolve and ingenuity. We pride ourselves on digital equity and can share that we have provided all families who needed with connectivity devices. We are working with the local library to ensure that we always have a supply for our students. From the start, we increased our board our ba- our bandwidth. To ensure that teachers could provide immersive learning experiences over the internet. If the board reckon remembers, we had so much bandwidth that we were one of the few districts that did not crash at any point during this. And we also, from the start, trained our teachers to support our students in hybrid instruction. This was done through simulations and workshops. And thankfully to our peer coaches, they provided drop-in sessions and coaching and our administrators who sat in on virtual lessons. Teachers in Cottle are in-person, hybrid to another classroom and remote to students at home. This is an amazing feat with Arcade of Five instruction. We provided clear communications to staff and families. We had so many Zoom meetings when we started this. Plans we put in motion were developed through collaboration with all stakeholders with an eye to innovation. We were thoughtful in our selection of tools, devices, whiteboards, online services. We know our teachers can provide something in person that is very difficult to replicate online. In the end, through collaboration, we prioritized in-person instruction at every turn. We ran reports to determine room occupancy. We changed cafeterias and auditoriums. We solicited feedback through surveys. We worked with our teachers to redesign our schedule, even having block scheduling in the high school. Had Zoom meetings again with staff and parents and constructed new learning spaces in every corner that we could find.
So we'll begin by diving into the first pillar, social and emotional learning. This is based on our belief that in order to access learning and understanding, all members of our school, community should demonstrate self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, self-management. Positive relationship skills, all for the optimal mental, social and emotional well-being of our students. So the first pillar breaks into four other goals with corresponding actions and systems of measurement. For the purposes of this presentation, each goal is coded based on the pillar, SEL, for example, and then a corresponding goal number, G one, G two. The accomplishments and upcoming action items are all aligned with these goals and we use this coding to demonstrate these links. Firstly, uh, we are committed to establishing and promoting a culture for mental health wellness. We will do this by implementing an evidence-based curriculum focused on students' physical, social, emotional and mental health. This is known as SEL G one. Additionally, we have set a long-term goal in which we partner with families to support the social, emotional well-being of students. We know that the work we do in our buildings is only a fraction of the Toccoho student experience. Forging connections and bonds with our parents, developing shared language and expectations is necessary in helping our young people succeed. We are also increasing the number of volunteer opportunities, externships and extracurricular activities for secondary-level students toward post-secondary endeavors. Student health, wellness, social skills, advocacy and agency. Lastly, we must acknowledge the impact of COVID nineteen on our strategic planning. In the wake of COVID nineteen, we will support students and families dealing with the effects of the global pandemic with its impact on families and learners.
So on this next page and how you'll be seeing this uh presentation. Is that our accomplishments of what we have done towards these goals are related to the goal, like SEL G one, the goals that. Christopher just, Mr. Keo just spoke about. So this year, we have launched a partnership with Rethink, a program that supports wellness and coping skills. This is involved training with teachers on September twenty first and December seventh. These were attended by all staff uncovered the resources Rethink provides, including videos, worksheets and lessons. The workshop leader also walked through ways to address the uncertainty of the pandemic. Um, and the stress that in 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 engenders in both our staff and our students. We have also rolled out this SEL program in the elementary and secondary schools. Our guidance counselor and school psychologists have been pushing into elementary classrooms and teaching lessons on emotional regulation using the Rethink curriculum. Meanwhile, in the middle school, the health teacher has integrated these materials in his health curriculum. And Mr. Pappas have launched lessons into his AP psychology classes. Our principals have used some of these materials in their faculty meetings and training, focusing on positive mindsets. This has led this has led to other curricular connections as well. Academically, SEL has been integrated on an ongoing basis in conversations of character and plot in ELA classes. And studies of historical figures and social studies at the secondary level. Additionally, the counseling staff has been hosting sessions on positive decision-making and incorporating SEL materials into counseling sessions. A new program with the acronym TIGER, which stands for Tocco Intervention Guidance Educational Results Program. The TIGER program targets students who have experienced increased difficulty attending school and engaging in instruction. A special thanks to the middle school, high school administration, um, the Assistant Principal of Student Support Services. And the counseling staff for their hard work on this new initiative. Additionally, goals SEL two and SEL four are involved with the presentations to parents on strategies to support student health and well-being. This has begun most recently with a presentation by Ms. Jenna Mizillo on positive parenting strategies. In this webinar, Ms. Mizillo walked through tenants and strategies behind positive peer parenting. Her expertise as an applied behavior analyst has really helped to enrich our community. As we saw in the positive responses we received on our workshop feedback forums. We have set a short-term goal of adopting a family and a parent and family engagement policy codifying our commitment to partnership. This was reviewed by the board and adopted on December seventh, twenty twenty. Lastly, we have sought collaboration and partnership with community agencies. This includes a partnership with Ecap organization, our meeting with the mayor and local leaders to discuss grant opportunities. Meetings with the library and our participation in the police reform initiative of Toccoho. Our short-term goal is to develop extracurricular activities and promote and programs promoting transferable skills necessary for a global citizen. Under the new principle of student services and also all the administrators at the middle school, high school and elementary school. All clubs are integrating the Board of Ed's strategic goals of promoting citizenship skills, civic engagement and community service. Community service is the core of the National Honor and National Junior Honor Society events. We have boasted participation through outreach for students, believing that involvement in these clubs are boosts to a student's mental and physical health. Again, community service has become the key to our club's work. We want to see our clubs invest in our neighborhood and local community. Examples of these activities these clubs are doing include the winter foods drive, reading to Cubs and shoveling snow for seniors, as some students did today. We have also hosted a webinar presentation with Dr. Calagaris, our school physician, and some members of the Health and Wellness Committee. Who answers questions our staff posed about the ways they can keep themselves and their students healthy and safe during the pandemic. Lastly, we have demonstrated thoughtful approaches to different family and community circumstances in our work with families. Naturally, this work is often sensitive and confidential, but we have developed thoughtful intervention plans with consideration again towards this pandemic. This has been evidenced in conversations between counselors and families, as well as among teachers, administration and parents. This can be seen in our ongoing communication in regard to the health crisis.
Moving forward, we will continue to evaluate the implementation of the rollout of our SEL program. Revising and modifying it with an eye to the needs of our students and the demands of this time. We plan to continue distributing print and digital resources for our families. We are also interested in continuing to build on our relationship with community partners. One example will be to build on the relationship with our local libraries. We look forward to developing a slate of clubs and extracurricular activities next year, which will hone our students' linguistic and verbal skills. And help them to develop their voices as well-reasoned advocates and agents of change. We are developing additional community service projects that we look forward to sharing. If we are back to normal next year, we also look forward to administering the Panorama School Climate Survey. Many districts held off this year as the data did not build on structures from the past, nor did it provide a very reliable baseline. So we're hoping that next year we will have more of a traditional structure upon which we can build a data foundation. SEL is an ongoing process. When done correctly, it responds to the needs of our students and takes stocks of the socio-emotional climate in which they find themselves. Upcoming actions and goals will continue to evolve and we will continue to communicate these. We pivot now to the second pillar, which is based in the belief that to meet the diverse needs of all learners and improve student outcomes. We must design equitable instruction and learning opportunities based on achievement data and students' strengths, interests and abilities. Pillar two is entitled, The Diverse Needs of Learners. Our first goal associated with this is to address the achievement gaps uh by foster, address any achievement gaps by fostering continuous growth and proficiency. As measured by federal, state and local assessments for students in targeted subgroup populations. The state reports data broken into different demographic groups, including gender, racial and ethnic identities. It also looks at students based on whether or not they have an IEP or receive ENL supports. Our goal is to target achievement gaps demonstrated by this data. We are working with reports from the state, however, at a significant lag. With no state exams administered last year, the state has already requested a waiver for exams this year. Some of the work we will discuss tonight is setting a foundation for more reliable and responsive data streams. Our second goal is to establish learning environments that affirm student backgrounds and experiences. And this work is deeply rooted in the state's culturally responsive sustaining education framework. Lastly, building off of our discussion of data, we are looking at attendance very closely. This is due in part, of course, to the disruptions of last year, but also due to our belief that being in school with our talented teachers. Is a valuable experience that is impossible to replicate or to stream.
Today, we have focused on our accomplished number of our actions. Align to the goals that Mr. Keo just discussed. This includes our focus on digital equity by providing connection and software support to families experiencing issues. This includes recent communication with the library to install, ensure all students have access to a hotspot. We have also prioritized in-person instruction for students receiving special education or ENL supports. As well as our youngest K to five learners. We have implemented our iReady pilot, supplementing star screenings with follow-up assessments and instructional interventions. Our administrative team has discussed data through an equity lens, disaggregating data enrollment and attendance data by subgroups. Absenteeism is monitored and addressed swiftly. For example, in the nine, in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year, the chronic absenteeism rate. At the high school was twelve point six percent. But the rates were higher for students who identify as Hispanic, economically disadvantaged or have a disability. And we have really seen that across the state. Ours is higher, but not as high as some of the other districts. But it's still a cause of something we need to look at. This analysis then helped us to center our work on developing sys- systems to expedite. Systems in absenteeism, particularly in this unique hybrid year. We have launched our Toccoho Equity Team, which is grounded in the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. The CRSE is a bold blueprint for our district to promote equity and affirm student identities, experiences and differences. Already moving forward on these goals is the Cottle Diversity Club, for example, overseen by our school counselor. We have also maintained and promoted rigor this year. We are offering open enrollment in our AP programs and we have accelerated all students into algebra and earth science in the eighth grade. Now, these programs are currently under review and teachers and administrators are analyzing data and feedback. Looking ahead, we look to define a vision statement in regard to diversity and inclusion. Very happy with what we are seeing so far. We want to expand iReady to our K to eight students, something we'll discuss in the budget process. And continue to explore course pathways and schedule structures that allow for more enrichment, challenge and rigor. We may continue using the Tiger program as we pride ourselves on our graduation rate and understand the consequences of this pandemic. In a review of our regional data around graduation rates, Toccoho is one of the highest ranked with our ninety ninety eight point nine graduation rate. We are looking to launching the What I Need program or the WIN program, as you know of it, when we are able to resume our pre-pandemic programming schedule at Cottle. We are conducting and planning to conclude a review of our acceleration model in seventh and eighth grade and rebuilding off our data analysis. Continuing to zero in on chronic absenteeism amongst subgroups. Given the emphasis on CRSE, we are planning to present to the Board of Education and Community on the framework. Of what all stakeholders do to help, can do to help enrich the experience of all learners. We are doing this with our Toccoho Equity Team comprised of all stakeholder groups. We are interested in planning community events that celebrate the diversity of our students. As we said before, Toccoho's diversity is Toccoho's strength and we are spotlighting and celebrating this diversity.
To prepare students for future success, we will embed contemporary teaching and learning strategies into all disciplines. Our third pillar is based in goals that advance Toccoho's progressive vision of teaching and learning.
The three goals associated with this pillar are seen here. Our goal is embed is to embed global competencies, creativity and collaboration. All of these critical skills in today's society and economy. And this drives our conversations around curriculum and instruction. We have also set a goal regarding early literacy, ensuring that students in our youngest grades establish a grade framework. For lifelong literacy through a systematic, multi-sensory and structured language program. Lastly, as alluded to in previous goals, we want to improve opportunities for higher-level courses and rigorous learning experiences. This is not simply flipping a switch. Creating these opportunities means articulation and coordination throughout the whole system. Woven into the younger grades and built into a student's high school experience.
To this end, we can celebrate the ongoing hybrid and in-person instructional models. That are the result of the tireless work and efforts of our teaching staff. To redesign their entire approach to instruction. We focus when possible on expanding in-person instruction and increasing opportunities for students to learn on site. We've been deploying instructional technology, new Chromebooks, interactive whiteboards, thoughtfully with an eye towards supporting instruction. Creative learning systems has provided our esteemed teacher with professional learning and resources to help imbue lessons with engineering and problem solving. In fact, through a guest speaker series, students have heard firsthand from professionals in the field of science, technology, engineering and math through Zoom. Our administrators are engaged in post-observation conferences centered on advancing authentic learning opportunities. Our staff have been very responsive to these conversations and we have been able to celebrate the designers of our student choice reading program. For their recognition by the New York State Reading Association. Lastly, we have launched in the elementary grades, foundations, early literacy lessons. An innovative science curriculum and exciting relevant novel studies. We have built into our professional days time for our math teachers to meet, review curriculum and data. And to plot the learning experiences of students moving from Cottle to the middle school. These meetings have been grounded in data, comprehensive reviews of the materials and professional expertise.
Looking ahead. Wait, I'm trying to see. Yes, this is where I are. So look ahead, you can see the upcoming action items. And there are a number of them we are looking forward to undertaking to align with our contemporary teaching and learning goals. This includes a focus on project-based learning and pairing high school teachers together to create cross-culture, cross-curricular projects. We are also working on an ex- um, an entrepreneurial course for high school students that focuses on marketing, financial planning and aesthetic design. You will hear more about that in our budget presentation in March. We look forward to continuing the writing revolution, training new staff and offering updated resources to previously trained staff. We are discussing foundations level three with our third grade team and college administration. And look to build opportunity and inventory lists for our novel studies in grades three to five. In an upcoming, again, budget presentation, we we will outline. we, we will outline the ways we believe this to be a better path forward in terms of elementary ELA curriculum.
Lastly, we come to our fourth pillar, professional learning. In support of the district's strategic goals, we will set out to create a systematic approach to continuous professional learning that values instructional collaboration, creativity, data analysis, and K-12 curriculum consistency and alignment.
Off this pillar, we have three long-term goals. To consistently design high-level, relevant, and ongoing professional learning opportunities that support all the areas of our strategic plan. In many ways, this pillar is woven into all our previous slides as we need to continue learning to advance our organization and all the pillars. We look to develop among our professional learning communities, PBLs, working with data and contemporary instructional and curriculum strategies. We are also aiming to continue promoting teacher use and mastery of technology and to advance efforts to integrate problem-solving learning so our kids are prepared for anything.
This year, our professional learning had to look different. This included hybrid superintendent conference days and asynchronous learning days, giving our staff the opportunity to learn new skills, modify materials, and collaborate with one another. These have been a tremendous success. Additionally, we have offered professional learning experiences in a variety of programs and initiatives. These include, but are not limited to, Rethink Education, Creative Learning Systems, iReady, and Foundations. We prioritize opportunities for teachers to meet in groups to discuss curriculum. With an eye to the future, and after a year of data disruptions, we have piloted tools for data collection. We continue that analysis, but have found promising information from our iReady pilot. We've also continued to offer training on our STAR assessments and included some rollout sessions on iReady at Cottle. Lastly, our peer technology coaches have answered so many calls in very complex times. They have used data to target their support and have hosted sessions on tools and practices that have served as a lifeline as we launched hybrid instruction.
Looking ahead, we are continuing professional learning on Science Twenty-One through our collaboration on Science Twenty-One and Foundations in the grades K to two and possibly grade three. We are also carving out time again for the three to five teachers to meet and plan novel studies. In addition to providing the opportunities for professionals to meet in learning communities, we will provide direct information on norm structures and data analysis strategies that can enrich our staff's time and deepen instructional conversation. We will also explore partnerships for training and project-based learning.
As challenging as this time has been, it's hard not to be inspired by what we have seen. Since March, we witnessed a seismic transformation of our education system, a transformation that shows no signs of slowing down. Many of the changes occurring were shifts education would have undergone in the years ahead. However, we are pleased to report that Tuckahoe was well positioned to navigate these unexpected twists and turns. We are even more pleased to report that Tuckahoe is committed to looking forward and capitalizing on the strengths, ingenuity, and innovation of this dynamic educational community.
We are proud of all that we have accomplished, and we are excited about the work ahead. Our progress in this, in face of so much uncertainty, is a testament to the stakeholder groups you see here, our students, our faculty and staff, our administrators, our supportive community, and our Board of Education. We refuse to let COVID define this year. It is not a year lost. It is a year where we have grown and connected with our central mission more than ever. Thank you.
All right. That was a really, really good presentation. Excellent, very well done, great slides too. Really, really well done. Thank you very much. And I know that was a little bit of a, it may seem to some as a little bit of a repeat from, from presentation you guys gave, I think that was two months ago, I think, maybe, I'm not sure. Maybe a little more than that. I have no constant time anymore. But it was, but this one, I think, was, was more, what was different about this one was this was getting a little bit more of an update about what's been accomplished and what specifically looking to accomplish in the interim. So I think that was really, really good. So I have a few questions and comments, but I'll, I'll go last. Does anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
I do. So I guess I'll go first. I, I just, thank you very much. That was, that was excellent. I have a couple of questions. One is just in regarding to, okay, so three things. One is, when you talk about reliable data streams, I know you talked about enrollment and attendance as being maybe one of them. Can you speak to a little bit about, when you talked about the chronic absenteeism, the twelve percent was actually higher than I, that was pretty high. What, when you say you developed a system, what, what, are you discussing, you discussed that, what did that mean? You say you were developing a system around that.
Right, so, um. Somebody has feedback, like there's something on, somebody has like something on the back, they could use that. Figure out where it's coming from, but, um. Basically, it's having a system. So when students are absent for a certain amount of days, see, I think what people don't understand is chronic absenteeism definition has changed. It is, it doesn't matter if it's an excused or unexcused absence. So that's why it's so much higher. Because you see with students that start to have a lot of absences, that their grades go down. I mean, it just makes sense that your grades are married to how much you're in school, just as much as anything would be when it involves learning. So even if a student is sick, that still counts towards chronic absenteeism. Now, of course, we have a whole method in place. So after more than two absences a month, we'll start to push you towards chronic absenteeism. Now, we will contact the parent. If, if it's an excuse and we know students are ill, then we understand that, you know, that we will help that family through it. Perhaps the student needs some extra help. But sometimes if students have chronic illnesses, that's something we need to look at. Let's say a child has asthma, we can, we can reach out to people who can help them. Let's say a child has a lot of different kinds of illnesses that may be psychosomatic. As we see with, there's an increase in school refusal, used to be called school phobia, throughout the county, throughout the state, and I'm sure COVID nineteen is going to play into that in times to come. We need to find that out because chronic absenteeism is defined as more than two days or ten days a year. So that's why the number, Laura, is so high, because nobody looked at it like that before. But when you look at it that way, and the state's looking at it that way, when you look at it that way, you need to really step back and say, we have to look at our students that are even absent for excuse absences. And we have to have our parents understand that you don't take a vacation during the school year. That's not a school holiday. That is an illegal absence. And that's something that, you know, also plays into that. You know, teachers have been sent to work for students to take holidays. And that's why, part of the reason why our numbers are high. You don't make doctor's appointments during the school day unless it's some kind of emergency. And that's sort of like a shift in some of the things that we have been doing in Tuckahoe. Now, the subgroups are of a concern because if you have certain subgroups that are coming less often than other subgroups, we have to see why that is. And lots of district students with disabilities are high, but we have to see why they are absent so much more often than other groups. And examine it student by student, but also look at cohorts of students. And that's why we made the Tiger Program this year. We just saw that there was a number of students, especially during the pandemic, that had not been engaging in school. And they were at risk of not, some of them were seniors, of not even passing the school year. So we had to reach out, we had to develop a program to bring them back to school. Even if it's a few hours a day, you know, once they stop going, there's no way, you know, in some ways, there's no way of turning back. The more you miss, as you know, middle school, high school, you miss a day, you miss two days, you've missed a lot, especially with the way we're doing things now. So we just, actually, we just developed that program. So that's really looking at groups and having a process to say, hey, it's not okay. And this one, we don't have to handle student by student. Let's put something together for this group of students.
I think that's excellent. And just one quick question. When you mentioned accelerated in the seventh and eighth grade, can you speak to that a little bit? My, my concern there, and I, I know we've spoken about this before, is that, so if you're making all of the children push into an accelerated class, how do you differentiate those that can handle that? And, and then if they are an accelerated, that night, is that a ninth grade class? Does that go on there? I would be concerned as a parent to hear that everybody's going to be in one group, you know?
We have, we, I will let Mr. Keough go a little further on this because he's really working on that. So one of the ways you end up, we certainly break kids into, you know, off into categories once they are not advanced in certain classes. But on the other hand, we don't want students to have a low grade or be in a class that they can't achieve in. So this year, we did that, you know, I was pretty much betting on the fact that there wasn't going to be any testing, which I know there isn't. But we were, which ended up turning to, to happen that way. But we wanted to see how this would work. And now we're stepping back, just like what you said, and we're relooking at it. One of the ways we could do it, if we went forward with that, is kids don't have to take the regions in eighth grade. They can, we can make another course in ninth grade and giving them the taste of algebra, let's say. But we also, teachers are looking at the data, and they are saying like this, this, it seems to be easier in science to do it, I believe, than in math. But we are looking at, should we do this? Does this work? And we're stepping back from it, I believe. So, Mr. Keough, can you talk about those meetings you've been having?
Yeah, and, and a lot of the focus has been looking at the, the standards and making sure that they're being hit in, in these programs in ways that will not just benefit them in those years, but those are foundational skills that will, you know, carry over into the high school. So we want to spend a lot of time making sure that we are giving the proper amount of attention and opportunities for kids to practice these skills before they go off into the high school. So we've been looking at different curriculum, different programs, seeing if we agree with their pacing guides, seeing if we feel like that is what our students can benefit from. But it's, it's a comprehensive review, so we're, we're still in the midst of it. But we have been thinking some of the things that you've mentioned, Ms. Banky, and we're making sure that we move forward in a way that doesn't just benefit kids now, but benefits them in the future as well.
Right, so one of the things we might see in how, I think, just you know, while other people are talking, we're getting a lot of feedback, um, one of the things that we see, we're looking at the curriculum from middle, from elementary school to middle school, particularly in math, because anytime when you are switching from one school to another, and we see the biggest jump to be middle school across the board in everything, and it's not just this district. So we're looking at curriculums that may bridge the gap better in math. And again, you know, this all goes back to elementary school, like reading and math and all of that. And I know they changed the math curriculum in the elementary school. We're adding foundations in the elementary school, so we should be seeing a change over the years for more coherency. But again, we don't, we want kids to gain the skills that they need to gain to be successful. And for those students who may have been part of this, they may go into another type of class in high school that will work on some of the skills that they did not get this year. So again, we're studying it. That was, that is one way to lift everybody. But I think another way is something that Mr. Lenahan is working on is more access to AP courses for students. You know, that gives more students the opportunity, which he has been working on over the years.
Thank you.
Hi.
Fred, oh, go ahead, Lauren, go ahead.
No, Cynthia.
Well, I was just, it was about the AP that you just brought up. I was gonna just ask a little bit about that, like how is more access to be given down the road, what does that look like?
So again, you're, you're kind of, I think I got it. It wasn't exactly, you want to know what the AP courses going ahead will look like? Mr. Keough, do you want to take that?
Just what you're saying. More access, how will that setup will be?
Here, what?
You said how the setup would be, Cynthia? You're going in.
Well, I'm just thinking you mentioned about it working on giving. I, I mean, life, I must be messing up.
Yeah, we can't, we can't hear you too well. You're all gone.
I'm gonna text someone, just ask.
Well, if, if you want, maybe, maybe go out and come back in, maybe to help, I don't know.
Okay.
We'll circle back to you, see if you got it straightened out. Laurie, did you want to go next? Did you have anything?
I, I'm thrilled to know that Foundations is being implemented in the elementary levels. That's terrific news. It's needed, I think, and I think that's going to be very, very helpful for all students, no matter whether they are working low grade level, on grade level, or above. I wanted to know a little bit about the, the, you, you mentioned that you're drilling down in some of those subgroups to figure out different things. Can you share a little bit more about how are you going to mitigate some of the challenges you may find for students in some of those subgroups? We know typically that, you know, for example, girls are not necessarily interested in some of the STEM sections, not necessarily encouraged in maybe some of the business classes and that sort of thing. We know that some minority groups may not fare as well on certain assessments or certain interests. How are we drilling down to make sure that we have more of those subgroups as strong candidates for AP courses? What are some of the things that you're thinking of?
Right, so some of it is a change in curriculum, for sure, which is what we're looking at. But some of it is also to look at the data, which is exactly what you're saying. You know, it's interesting because our data is old. And that's why we, you know, especially because we haven't had assessments and everything that the state gave us is, you know, from a couple of years ago. So, but that, but the state test isn't everything to look at. Certainly in K to eight, it's not that indicative of anything, pretty much. I, I'm much more interested in how our students do on regions and AP tests. And a little bit too much concentration on some things is not helpful. But some of the new assessments that we're using is iReady, and we're really looking at our STAR assessments in a different way. Mr. Keough, do you want to expand on that?
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that we've been doing is, is trying to figure out what information we have at our disposal. You know, the state assessments, you know, even the, the attendance data that Dr. Goodman mentioned was reported to us from the eighteen nineteen year. So last year looked different, this year looks different. So even something like STAR, which has been with us consistently, hit this weird blip that, that kind of skews a little bit of the data. So making sure we're set up to collect this data to look at some of the hypotheses you mentioned in terms of student interest level. And if those things are consistent in the data, developing action plans. We've talked a lot about the Tiger Program, but that's definitely a program that was born out of the, a review of the data and seeing where these certain areas are and, and what can be done to respond to that.
And then the ninety eight point, what is it, ninety eight point nine, I think the statistic was, is great. That's really, really good. My interest is where are those students graduating out to? Are they, you know, and what those drilled down subgroups, where they're going, what's happening with them after? And then talking about doing sort of a postgraduate survey to see how well we did preparing those students for the various different areas that they have, you know, gone into after graduating high school. But I am concerned about where they're graduating out to and how they're graduating because I know New York has like different levels of graduation with the regions without. I, I don't get that because we didn't have that in New Jersey, so I don't know what that is. But maybe you could talk a little bit about that.
No, I think that the, you know, even when I put in, I, I actually said to Chris, when we put in this graduation rate, it's going to be like, oh, well, everybody needs to graduate from high school. We just happen to be, for some reason, like in the highest, you know, higher than all our surrounding districts. And that's why the Tiger Program was concerning that there were seniors involved and juniors. We want them to graduate. But on the other hand, we want to make sure that our students, where are they graduating to? And that's something, you know, we have it. And that's something, you know, we have the opportunity with a new guidance counselor, and we have a very experienced guidance counselor. We have two in our, in our high school. And we are really looking, and I actually have been meeting with them in the last year that I've been here to look at what colleges are our kids going to and the same, all the questions that you're looking at. Last year, we had a very outstanding class going to some very top colleges. But it's not just the top colleges, it's all those mid colleges too, and making sure that kids have opportunities to go to all of them. We, so we're, we are in that direction. We are thinking the same way you are. We have a professional guidance office, but we also need, we're very small. We need to continue to maybe look more, maybe even in this next budget, at providing some, you know, it really helps when guidance counselors are able to visit schools. That is huge, they're not going to come to here. You know, we're very small and our, our college fair is, you know, if they get a few students, it's not like they're taking in thirty students or forty students. But if we can get out a little bit and perhaps give our guidance counselors some trips, things like that, because the relationship really matters. And to get to know that we have these outstanding kids in Tuckahoe. And, you know, relationship and talking about our students have a lot to do with it. So, you know, just giving them some more opportunities that they haven't had in the past and that other guidance counselors in other districts have, those kinds of things.
That brings me to the third question, nice segue there. Partnerships, because that does bring, that is about building relationships and having, building a network for kids to go to. I'm interested in us as a district, expanding those relationships and networks outside of where we always had those connections. Maybe moving over to some of, and I've said this at other board meetings, moving over to other universities or universities. We have great universities here in New York that, you know, maybe with their teacher education program, pre-service teachers and, you know, technical schools, where some of our kids who are not headed off to college, but they are skilled at building or coding or those kind of things. Building up networks and collaborations and partnerships with some of those kind of entities.
Yep, I agree. And again, you know, we're very small, but our parents and introducing to them also these other universities. You know, one of the things I've said before is that a lot of the private universities also, they seem so expensive, but after financial aid packets, packages, they could seem like a state school. So we need to be open and have our kids reach to them and, you know, see what they get. Again, we have great kids, so we can spread it out more. You know, another thing is, you know, parents may be, and students may be willing to leave the area a little bit. You usually have a better chance of getting into a school when you go outside of your state. So those are the kind of things that, you know, we have to bring the district along with and make sure that everybody's comfortable with it, because there is a group of schools that, you know, Tuckahoe leans towards. So we need to broaden that, I agree.
I'm hoping too that some of our parents that are listening, that are in some of these great corporations, certain areas, or what have you, would consider, I'm thinking about how they can sort of begin maybe connecting our district to some of their agencies or companies or that sort of thing. So with respect to internships and even after graduation, possibilities for students.
Well, we do have a program, an internship program. So if people want to reach out, we, and actually through the reopening committees, I've met some of the most interesting parents that really have jobs that would really attract, I think, a lot of students. So I think Mr. Katson even went to speak in a class, didn't you?
Yeah, I did, I did, I did last year, I did the forensic class. I did a guest speakership there, which I really enjoyed, it's great, yeah.
I think that we have parents that are in fascinating fields like you. And I think that them being open to internships or just coming in to speak to a class, they should really contact Mr. Keough and tell, you know, our kids is coding, you know, so many fields that are engineering, that are really great fields today. Certainly the FBI always, but I don't think you can easily give an internship there. But those kinds of things, our kids, you know, it just, it just gives them other ideas of what they can do. So I think that's all great ideas.
Yeah, great.
Okay. We used to, I just agree for, I'm sorry, we used to have the career day, I went to once. I participated in when, maybe four or five years ago. So that was something we used to do. And I agree with everything Laurie said about, you know, bringing in as well as going out. So I'm excited to, to work on that as a board and as a district. But yeah, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot in our, in our community to, to tap into for sure. Go ahead, Pete, sorry.
No, that's great, no, I was just gonna pass it on to Torres if she had anything.
I do have a couple of things, yes, thanks. So to start, when we're talking about analysis and at-risk learners and absenteeism, I wanted to know if we're doing anything to look at how kids are performing in this hybrid environment? Because I know that maybe they're not identified students, but I know that kids are struggling with this model of learning and maybe not performing their best and how we're intervening.
So Cottles is a little different than the middle school, high school, because the students are in every day, it is different, but they are there. And I think it's hardest as the kids get up in grades to, because curriculum is so much more difficult. But we have found, at least, that our students are being pretty resilient. And we're, we are picking out those kids that, that's why we started that program, is to really analyze the groups of kids that aren't doing well. And there's lots of reasons they're not. It could be that they're struggling with the curriculum, and it could also be that, you know, this pandemic is taking quite a toll on them. So we know that this year, we have had to really examine, we didn't just examine absenteeism, we examined who wasn't doing well in classes, like which students were failing at risk or failing classes. That's, and that usually was indicative, like it went hand in hand with them not coming to that hybrid learning session. So what came first, that they couldn't do the work? Or that there was some kind of other problem, you know, like an emotional problem with the pandemic? So we've been weaning that out with our students. And it's not just students with disabilities, it's taken a toll on all students.
Oh, absolutely. I think that also, and I don't, maybe you're doing this, and if you are, that's great. But I think there are kids who, I think especially like in the middle school years, because I do think that that age group needs to be in school. I think we're doing them a huge disservice, being hybrid. And especially for the sixth graders who transitioned into a whole new school building and everything else. But some of those kids may not be necessarily failing. And maybe they're like getting a seventy-five, but they used to be a ninety or ninety-five student. And so to me, that's significant change and we need to support them. And I think now that as this is like wearing on and continuing, I think there's probably a significant amount of kids that fall into that kind of gray category. And I do find that, and not just in our district, but any district, that it's like the, if there's a blaring issue, okay. You know, but for those kids that are kind of in the middle, they very easily will fall through the cracks.
Yeah, I totally agree. And I think that, that this is a hard year. And I think that we are, teachers and parents are looking towards those kids also. And I think that kids need to be here more. And that's, we are going to be meeting with our health and wellness committee. Who knows what will happen next week when we meet? But it's an interesting fact that, you know, sports are coming back full time, which is a good thing, but students aren't. So I do think that it has taken a toll on middle school kids in particular. And that, you know, we're talking about it in Mr. Keough's curriculum meetings. Certainly Dr. Lenahan has been talking to staff about this also. Chris, you, Mr. Keough, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the support team and the administration meets very regularly and reviews cases and discusses kids that have been flagged for reasons related to data, but then also reasons related to observations, parent concerns. You know, sometimes if you see something in the data and bring it up to one of the, the support team members or the administrators, they already know. So, you know, they're, they're really responsive to that. But of course, if parents or if anyone else sees something, that, that form of data is also really crucial to the work we're doing.
And one of the reasons we made that assistant principal position at the middle school is so that it's not just for the student who's failing, and it's not just for the student with special needs, but any student who is not doing, I say this to the community, up to where they were before or struggling, that's an administrator to go to. And I'm working really closely with the counselors, but also with the teachers. And there has been those kinds of interventions, and they haven't been for students who are failing. They're for kids either coming up and saying they're struggling or parents knowing that their student is not doing as well as they can be doing. It is, it's a tough time right now, it really is. And I think it was a good idea, the way we restructured the high school and middle school last year to really have, even without a pandemic, and having a, an administrator just looking specifically at those students. Because, and again, it's not, it's student services. It's not just kids who are special education, but any pupil service, any pupil issue that you see, even if your AP kid is not performing up to what they usually do. That's, first, you always go to the teacher, like always, always, always. But then, you know, if you need some intervention or something and things are really, you know, going out of control, you can always call that position too, or the administration. The whole high school, middle school administration is very responsive. But we made that position in particular for that, for those issues that especially we see in middle school.
Okay, good. Well, I'm looking forward to meeting and hoping that we can move ahead. Because I do think there is no substitute for in-person learning, period, end of story. And I think that's become really clear for many people. As far as, I guess this is a twofold question, and you mentioned AP kids, you know. I wanted to hear a little bit more about what AP offerings we're doing. And then I think that one positive through this pandemic is that we've definitely learned the pluses of distance learning and how that can work to our benefit of having that. And then also, what are we doing as far as trying to promote retention? Because there is always this eighth grade drop off, and very often, we're skimming off the top. And I think that that can sometimes negatively impact, you know, classroom dynamics and rigor and that type of stuff.
Right, so I'll let Mr. Keough answer this more fully, but I, I do agree with you. And we are looking at APs, we have just started that process. And perhaps, again, because we know, and we have used before, this online type of AP course also, that, you know, might be a way to essentially offer more opportunities for more students. But one of the things we were talking about with the guidance counselors is what kinds of courses we can offer to students that are of interest and not all the typical ones. So that's also, I mean, we see AP psychology seems to like pull in a whole group of kids. And there, there are others too, that you don't have to necessarily be, you know, a physicist or a very high math student to be in those, but you need to have an interest. And we find that when kids, when we match interest to students, it's amazing how well they can do. So Mr. Keough, I know you've been much more involved than I have been.
Yeah, and, you know, we've had conversations with our counselors and the secondary administration about ways we could put more courses into the, into the schedule. I think that's a logistical thing. I think some of the other pieces, you know, what the work we're doing with the younger students, the increasing rigor, the articulation pathways. I think that stuff also leads to more challenging coursework like APs and sets kids up for success down the line. So it's, it's, it's kind of a, an effort on two fronts. Creating the framework for it in the high school, working with some of the logistics of being a small school with having, you know, a certain number of staffing. But then also making sure kids are ready for that rigorous work, so that when the challenge is presented to them, they feel comfortable and confident taking it.
Is that something that could, does that kind of tie back to partnerships, relationships, networking? Where maybe some of those courses could be taken with some of our neighboring school districts that have more course offerings, but it be remote? If it had to be, so that there's no charge with it? Because I know that there are options, but you would have to pay a whole lot of money to send your kid to? And that's a matter of equity.
Yeah, you know, I know, because I used to be in Eastchester, that we did, we have, Bay and Tuckahoe have had that relationship before, a long time ago, where we shared courses. I started speaking a little bit to Dr. Glass if there was anything we could do. It certainly was not as easy to do as you, as you think. Or as we thought when we did it a long time ago. But it is something that we can look at. But an easier, possibly, and other way we can do it is, again, through these online AP classes, which will cost the district money, will be something that we might consider in the budget as we're talking, to just offer different things to different kids and have them have access to a teacher. Teachers teach the course online, but we want them also to have access to a teacher. So that would mean freeing up a period or something for, to, for a teacher. So that might be something that we also are exploring. By the beginning of March, you know, this was just a prelude, we'll have a better idea of where we're going with that. Again, being a small district is very hard to offer a lot of AP courses. But good ideas.
Torres, a tip for you?
Yeah, if you could just, if we could, I guess, expand a little bit on the, I know it's getting late, the retention of eighth grade students.
Right, so I think that is part of the reason why we are looking for more advanced courses. We want to make sure that kids also know that they will have, and one of the things we put in was all this community service. Next year, we're looking at a debate team so that students hone in on their skills. We're looking at an entrepreneurial class so that students can develop those types of work experiences. We want to make sure that we have what private schools have. Because we find that kids really, really, they like being here. So I, I think that we can hold on to more students when we offer even some more PBL types of learning, as we've discussed, you know, in blocks. When we might, we will introduce that more slowly next year. It was a little different this year. But those kinds of experiences, and really to make sure that we advertise our district in that way. And I think we have been doing a better job of, I actually am exploring a lot of different Facebook pages and I hear, and I, you know, from different communities in Tuckahoe and different moms groups. And Tuckahoe is getting, I think people are starting to realize, and you'll probably see that in your home sales, people are starting to realize what a little jewel this, and it always was, it's, but I think it's becoming more apparent, the district is. Actually, I think the way that the teachers and the administrators handled the pandemic has also helped our district, again, improve with parents who may really choose to keep their students here. Now, some people moved to Tuckahoe and they may say, you know, this was, this was our, our goal. But hopefully more and more, they'll see, even if it was that, that there's a benefit to staying here.
Thanks, I agree. And I think that like, everybody has done, I just, sorry to cut you off, Mr. Keough. I just wanted to follow that with saying, Tuckahoe has really done an outstanding job with bringing kids back and maximizing in-person instruction as a priority with the staff, administration, financially investing in it. And so that, I think, very apparent to, um, everyone. So thank you. Can't be said enough.
Yeah, we were never fully closed, closed either, ever. I'm not bragging about that to everyone I know.
Yeah, I, I think it was a mindset, you know, mindset that came from you, you have to come in and this board, I think as well. And, and your staff of, of making sure we kept the doors open as much as we possibly could to as many kids as possible. And I think that, that, that really, we were kind of a leader, I think, in the, in the, uh, in the area for that. So I think we're all proud of that, without a doubt. And I couldn't agree more with Thorez about the importance of in, in-person instruction. You know, so one question I had was, um, and I won't be long, a lot, a lot of the questions and concerns I had were already brought up, so I'm gonna be kind of pretty fast here. I know we're going kind of late. But what has the attendance been like of late in the middle school, high school amongst, um, the in, you know, the in-person cohort? So are we, are we get, I know we had a little bit of a drop off after the holidays. Looked like some, some kids were staying back and doing virtual instead of coming in. Is that picked back up again or, or where, where are we at now with that?
Um, you know what? I, I had the numbers just recently when it was dropping off. Actually, it didn't drop off as much as I thought it did. I can't just pick it up right now, but I can get back to you on that. Um, you know, after the holidays, I think I made it clear too, that if you think that you have been, you know, maybe not stellar about all the rules out there, you know, I don't think anybody wants to be a part of closing down a grade or a school. So people can make their individual choices, but please, and even if we end up bringing back more students, I, I make that very clear. You know, anybody could have a mistake. I don't want anybody to feel badly about getting this virus. It's extremely contagious. But you know, if you actually know, and this is going to be a problem after February break also, that you've traveled or that you've had gatherings in your house or, you know, maybe not masked or something. We hope people make good decisions. If anybody in their family is sick with anything, just stay home. And, um, I think that those are really important, uh, pieces.
Yeah, I think it's an individual decision and, and, and it's, I think it's great that we offer the options. You know, one concern I have is, um, I just hope that a lot of the parents in our district aren't allowing their kids to rule the roost and convince them to stay home because they want to stay home, um, which I can see that happening. Um, because I, I really do think that, you know, one of the things that I'm concerned, we talked about, and Thorez mentioned, made some good points about the challenges of, of this, um, hybrid situation. My son's had plenty of challenges with it. And by the way, the teachers have been, have been great reaching out to us. Um, so I, I, it, it hits home for me. Um, but I think one of the big challenges for our stu- our teachers is that there is being the difficulty of assessing kids remotely. I, I think that's what's being missed too by kids not coming to school is it's taking that interaction, uh, away from the teacher. And a lot of teachers, I think, probably are maybe not in the best position to assess how well a kid is doing. And then look, we said it before, but the reality of it, there's a lot of cheating going on. There's a lot, there's a lot of work being passed back and forth, um, I'm sure. And, and they're not in, in school as much. So, um, it could be difficult, very challenging for teachers, I think, to get a sense of how a kid is doing. Um, so, so I, I would encourage parents to send their kids as much as they can if they, if they're comfortable with it for health reasons. Um, I know my, my two kids are there almost every single time they're supposed to be and they come home and complain about the fact that they're the only ones in the class. But I'm like, I don't care, you're going. So.
I, I echo that too. I know that people have individual, you may, may have health issues in their we respect that, that, you know, again, the variants are, we don't know what they're going to be like. They are more contagious. Um, but, so I let people make that decision, but I do think that kids benefit from in-person instruction. Colleges are having the same problem with kids, you know. It's very hard to assess kids when they are, you know, not sitting in your classroom physically. So I do think, you know, the more that we can offer, you know, and again, we know that some people won't take us up on it and we'll offer the options. But the Health and Wellness Committee will be meeting, um. I think we actually put out a little Google survey, so we'll be able to send out the date if we haven't sent it out yet. Um, we were preparing in email. So, um, hopefully we'll have something more to report. Again, we're relying on a lot of our medical professionals to help us do that. But also parents, um, they need to make their own decisions, but we, I know that high school is one place where kids are starting to, you know, not come as frequently as they were at the beginning. Sports may lure a whole bunch of kids back in though.
Yeah, that's, that'll be a good thing. Um, yeah, so just a few small little things, because you, you guys hit more, most of the stuff that I, the more substance that I wanted to bring up. But, um, so a couple little hanging chads that I wanted to ask. I, I know climate surveys are probably not a good idea for this year for the reasons that Mr. Keo said. Um, but assuming that we do have a full year next year, um, what is the thought on that? Is the thought on now surveys going out at the end of the year? Uh, any, any thoughts to that in terms of the timeframe of that?
Yeah, um, I think we'll talk more about it and maybe we'll talk about it, um, in a board meeting. But, yes, I don't want to say anything off the top, but I think it's hard to send out a survey when the year first started in any way, unless we're comparing to this year. So I think that it would have to be at some point as a year is going on towards.
We're still thinking about doing a survey for, an internal survey for our, our students, an internal survey for our staff, and maybe even an external survey for parents and community, right? Is that what we're thinking?
Yes.
Good. Okay. I know we've been talking about that for many years. I know it's a little disappointing that we couldn't get that off the ground this year, but I understand why. It would be a weird year to send out a survey. So I get that. Um, just wanted to mention, I love the idea of the entrepreneurial, um, course. That's great. Uh, I know you guys speak more about that during the budget process, but I'm interested to hear more about that. That's great. Um, and the other question to you, you mentioned also when it's with regard to the, um, CRSE, uh, the Culture Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, which I know, um, you know, I, I was part of the first Equity Committee meeting when we talked about that. It was, it was a really good meeting. But you mentioned in your presentation presenting it to the board. Are you referring to just the board's representation on that committee or are you actually thinking about doing a, a, a board presentation on that?
A board presentation on that, but I'm sure as a board member on the committee, you will be sharing, um, some of your, you know, as we do, we share what's happening with our committees, but we are planning to do a presentation on, uh, what we come up with in that, in that.
All right, great. Excellent. That's good to hear. And um, you also mentioned in your presentation about doing more partnerships for training staff in PBL. Um, what, what, can you expand on that a little bit more? What, what types of partnerships, uh, were you thinking about in terms of, you know, getting our, our staff a little more up to speed on PBL, um, strategies?
Right. So we, Mr. Keo and I, and I'll let him speak a little bit more. We're starting to look for, you know, organizations that train staff on PBL. Again, something that we would put in our budget presentation, looking for schools that we may partner with. Because we know that this is pretty uncharted territory in some ways. And in some ways, you know, this is some stuff that we probably, that we are already doing and that we can figure out together. But we want to make sure we do with some fidelity. So we are looking at, uh, different organizations. There are some. Mr. Keo, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, um, there, there are a number of different organizations that approach problem-based learning, authentic learning, project-based learning. Um, and it's really about finding the right fit. Uh, some of them have different philosophies, different visions, different requirements. Uh, so, uh, in terms of where we are right now and where we ultimately want to go, uh, we're looking at all the different options that, that are out there.
So when you say organizations, you mean, you mean, um, organizations that sort of do the research on this? Um, as opposed to maybe schools that are actually using it or a combination of both?
Generally, organizations that have worked with schools that are already using it. Um, so they're usually, um, authors of different books, uh, consultant firms and, and things like that. Uh, sometimes they have very, you know, rigid, uh, requirements. Sometimes they, you know, really work closely with the schools to make something that's appropriate for that community. Um, they provide coaching. So those are the things that we're really interested in.
Right. Okay. Yep. All right. And that's kind of really all I had. I think to Thorez's point about retention, I, I think you hit it on the head. I, in my opinion, I think offering more APs and, and extracurriculars and options, um, for our kids. I think a lot of the kids that leave, leave because they don't feel like there's a parent, stuff like there's enough of those options. And then I, I also personally think the PBL stuff is another really good selling point. If we can build that out, I think that would really make us an attractive place to stay. Um, so, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, Pete.
Oh, good.
I also think that, you know, celebrating some of the things like our music program, our art program. I mean, we have some extremely talented teachers apart from our regular academic teachers that we really need to, I'm trying to share more things on Facebook, um, so that people are, realize that you, the education you get here, not only in the, in the chorus subjects, but also in the arts is really pretty superior.
Yeah.
And we should get known for that.
Yeah, I, I, I do think we, we probably should, you know, um, particularly when we get back to doing more normal board meetings and so forth, like do, do more sort of promoting of what goes on in the school. You know, I, I think, I think there's more things we can highlight that we don't. So.
I think even having the student reps, you can start to see how well spoken our students are and how much they, uh, how intelligent they are in person as well. I think that's been a good addition to our regular board meetings.
Yep.
I also just wanted to point, I don't, I don't know if you guys can see the chat, but, uh, Ms. Tate just wanted to say that her questions were answered through the conversation, but she also wanted to make sure that, yeah, people know she's.
I was gonna, I was gonna mention that, Cynthia. I didn't forget. I was gonna mention it at the end. She, she wanted me to let everybody know that she's having trouble with her audio, that, that she's not engaging. She certainly wants to engage and she did, uh, put her, put some of her questions in the chat, but, uh, they were mostly thrived around, or around the AP issue, which you've already answered, right, Cynthia? Good? All right, cool. All right, that's pretty much all I had. I, I, I think I said a lot of what I wanted to talk about was already talked about. Um, I, I liked, uh, I'm glad that you, there was a lot of emphasis about with the diverse learners section, talking about, um, options for more excelled students as well. Um, so that you, you hit on that quite a bit. So it's good. So that, that's about it for me. I think, I think we're good. Very, very good job. Excellent presentation. Um, we're definitely on, on the right path, I, I think anyway. So. Anything else from anybody else? Any alibis?
I just had, um, one question. It's not kind of, it's kind of around health and wellness and make the possibility of reopening and, um, the care and concern that we, um, have for our, our staff. Um, I was just wondering how, I, I know from reports that teachers, uh, people working in a district are considered frontline employee, uh, you know, um, frontline people that should be able to get the vaccine. How are we doing with our teachers who would like to have or our staff who would like to have a vaccine? Uh, how are we doing with that? So maybe we can reopen. They could feel a little bit more comfortable reopening.
Right. So that's a great question. So, um, teachers and staff were put in 1B, which was a great, um, thing that happened in New York State. So, um, personally I stayed up all night when I saw that they were and got knew at six o'clock, before six o'clock in the morning that the portal was open at the county center and sent robocalls and emails. And a lot of our teachers already have the vaccine, at least the first dose of the vaccine. Um, a couple of people were supposed to go today and probably tomorrow they'll be closed too, so they're gonna have to be bumped. But we're also working with the, because some, some people didn't, um, get one till later too. And some people were on the fence and now want one. So we're working with the county. Um, we had a very good meeting with, um, the county today to try to get a day for teachers to come in. Fingers crossed. We're also looking if anybody in this community has, you know, is, um, one of the, maybe, um, a couple of pharmacies have it actually. Um, they could certainly contact me because, or a doctor might have it. We do have a group that would like an earlier appointment or haven't gotten an appointment yet. Um, we have a somewhat idea of a number of people that, that got the vaccine. We're trying to get more education out about the vaccine. We do believe that, you know, we're encouraging, we can't force anybody to get the vaccine as of now, as of now. It could change, you know, because there are some things you have to get to work with, with students and that could change. But right now it's not, um, it's not required. But as teachers get vaccinated, they are so much more safe. They are so much safer. They just, they just are. And, um, that also, again, like you said, will help with the reopening of schools.
All right. This is a long one. Almost, well, it's over two hours, but good stuff though. Really good stuff. Um, the tax stuff was really scintillating, really exciting stuff. But important, you know, money's always important, right? Uh, okay. So we're, we're just about wrapped. We just have one item to vote on, one business item. It's just a personnel action. So then that's, and that's it. Then we can wrap it up. So that is resolved to accept personnel action items A through E as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Lori? Laura, second? All in favor? All right. That's great. So that's it. That's all we have. Thank you very much for your time. Thank, thank you for, uh, participating. Um, do I have a motion to exit out of the meeting, close out of the meeting? Thorez, second. Lori, all in favor? Okay, all set. Thank you very much, guys. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good job.